We clash momentarily for class solidarity. Cash circulate and give the masses back its currency. Grief from elites, oligarchs, state fed, deep state, fake fed. Everybody break bread, racism, homophobia, sexism, religion in its smelt of poverty. Living time to build a new system, unionize labor rights. Highlight the issue, talk aheads left is best. The saga continues. The No Me Key Show.
Hello and welcome to the No Me Key Show. It is Friday, March 11th. It's Fem Friday. We have a very special show today. Our first Friday back from my vacation in Cuba. A very exciting show today. We're going to be talking about everything from the trucker convoys in Canada. What happened? How it even took place, how it grew, who was behind it? Whether or not they are still in operation and obviously what that means for the global, the global impact of it, since they have had copycats all over the world. Later, we're going to be talking to Aline Brown. Aline Brown is going to talk about the climate justice movement, but specifically how climate change is impacting incarcerated communities, different facilities around the country, excuse me, which are being impacted by climate change from floods, hurricanes to fires, to heat, to worsening conditions because of the structures that just weren't set up for this type of, these types of events and how that's impacting the incarcerated people and what we can do about it. She's got some great reporting out in The Intercept right now. And then later, this is a fascinating one. We're going to be discussing the war on teachers and how the right wing has been coordinating and funding this movement for years to go after school boards and what it's really about. We're going to be talking with Commissioner Alison Collins. She's a former Board of Education Commissioner, excuse me, for the San Francisco Unified School District. They have done an incredible report on this. Your job might drop because like I said, it was never about just teachers. It's always about how to weaponize against a very powerful union that funds the Democratic Party. And really that has been a project of the Koch Brothers and the far right for quite a bit of time. All right, everybody, we have a great show. We will be right back after this quick break. You're watching the No Me Key Show. All right, guys, we have some breaking news and by the time you see this, I'm sure we'll know more information. We are, we are pre-taping a little bit early today. Out of Texas, the Supreme Court rules against abortion providers, closing last back door to block six week ban. That is out of the Texas Supreme Court on Friday. That's today. They, they dealt a final blow to a legal challenge per USA Today of the nation's most restrictive abortion law. Let's reiterate that. This is the nation's most restrictive abortion law. The Texas Supreme Court said licensing officials, I'm quoting USA Today, are not responsible for enforcing the state's near, near total ban on abortion, effectively ending the challenge brought by abortion providers across the state. This is again from USA Today. Attorney for Center for Reproductive Rights, Mark Huron says there is nothing left. This case is effectively over. And with respect to our challenge to the abortion ban, you know, this comes a day after Missouri passed a law banning abortions that are related to ectopic pregnancies. I shared a story on Instagram and Twitter in which I remember I had this, I have this very, probably one of my earliest memories was being a toddler sitting next to my mother's bed with an ice cream cone with sprinkles on it. Because of course, that's how your brain remembers things when you're that age. And she was in the hospital because she was not feeling well, pregnant, getting ready to board a flight. And my dad instinctively decided that he was going to take my mom to the hospital. And turns out, you know, she had complications. She had ectopic pregnancy and if she had boarded that flight or waited, the doctor said, she would have died. So it's, it's, it's very serious. This is extremely serious and there's not a, you know, ectopic pregnancies are not like a choice. It's, it's, you're killing the mother if you're banning it. That's what you're doing. This is an assault against women, an erasure of women. This is cruel. This is a human rights violation. I don't think we need to say, we say this enough. And I think we have to discuss this more and more and more on these leftist shows. And I'm asking all of the male allies here to do so on our behalf as women, because it's really going to take a true act of solidarity to recognize that this is about erasing women. This is about erasing women's rights. This is about reinforcing gender roles that are aggressively demonistic and, and it's beyond misogynistic. This is, this is about making sure that there is an elite group of white men who control everything and that we are not teaching next generations of men to have respect for women by not seeing them in office, by not having rights, by not being able to have autonomy over your own body. Yeah, I'll leave it at that. On that note, please, if you're not already, please make sure to support us on patreon.com/thenomekeyshow. That is how we fund the show. Make sure to like and subscribe. You gotta get those likes and subscribes up. You know, there's been a real attack on left media, as I'm sure you're seeing. Everybody's being hit hard right now. Everybody who's not supported by bots is being hit hard right now. Everybody who's not being supported by disinformation campaigns is being hit hard right now and isn't corporately funded. So please, if you can, and if you haven't already, and you're capable of becoming a patron or upping your patron, oh my God, that would help pay for another patron who maybe we've had, we lost along the way because of the economy. If you are a patron or have been and want to join again, let us know. We will work something out with you. Those are just the numbers that are on the screen, but like, we're happy to work out different patron levels, cover, you know, on off for a few months, whatever it is, we will help you because to me, this is a project that we've worked really hard on and we've put a lot of thought and effort on what it means to be, to do this show and to be in solidarity with other hosts and what kind of guests we have on. But we're only able to do that because we have patrons. And so please, if you can, come and support us and share our show on all the social media. We want to start doing clips again on social. I think that helps, but it's really about getting the information out there. And guests like our, like Alison, for instance, she, she's on the show. She's going to be talking about the, the attacks on teachers' unions and what that means for democracy and who's really behind it. Now, you're not really seeing that anywhere else, as you'll see in the show today. But thank you to everybody who already is a patron. We love you. We so love you. And we're looking forward to doing some special stuff with you very soon. Welcome back to the No Me Key Show. All right, our next guest is going to give us the update on what was the biggest story until Ukraine. And it seemed like that was the invasion that was coming. I'm not trying to be flippant about this. I think it was a very serious concern that the far right was putting money into, of course, the trucker convoy. Professor Nomi Claire Lazar is a professor in the Graduate School of Public and International Affairs at the University of Ottawa, where she is also an elected member of the governing board. She is quite an expert on these convoys and the state of emergency that, that Canada was, was sent into with the convoys. Thank you so much for joining us, Professor.
Thank you so much for the invitation. Much appreciated.
So do the convoys still exist? Is it still taking place? Cause the media seems to have forgotten about them.
Well, certainly there are still protesters in, in Ottawa. So my daughter and I finally ventured downtown over the weekend and there's still plenty of people around flying upside down Canadian flags and saying rude nasty things about Trudeau. And just yesterday I saw a truck parked with the signature flags as well. So certainly there are protesters still around, but that of course is their democratic right. At this point, the protesters are behaving as we expect protesters to behave. They're not committing any offense or disrupting the lives of Ottawa citizens, but they're certainly still around.
So can we, let's just work backwards on when they started to show up at the Capitol? Was there a sense that they were going to do this or did it just pop up overnight?
Well, we had, as far as I understand, quite a bit of advance notice that, that they were on their way. And so far, we, the public, don't have that much information as to why the police were not adequately prepared. Is it, is it the case that they simply didn't know what the protesters were planning? There have been suggestions that they, that they did know. And, but the police have said, or certainly were saying at the time, that, that, that they didn't expect this kind of thing. So they knew that there were people coming and planning to protest, but they didn't expect that this occupation style of protest. And the issue really was not so much that the protesters were here, but that they had basically entrenched themselves in such a way that, that the streets could not, physically could not be, be cleared. So certainly there, there were huge failures on the part of the police. It is heartening that there was accountability almost immediately. So that the chief of police resigned, so did the head of the police board, who was not adequately, the board is supposed to be supervising the police and they were not adequately exercising their power in terms of making sure that the police were doing what they ought to. So, so the board chair has also resigned and we do have a process of accountability underway as well with respect to police, members of the police force who seem to have been actively supporting the convoy financially and otherwise. So the good news is accountability. That's what we want to see.
So, so the police chief resigned and the member of the board. And this was because they did not put preventative measures in place? And that seems, that actually, I mean, that would never happen in the United States. Let's be real. But that seems almost, that's very aggressive. Were they, was there anything else? Like, were they linked financially, those people in particular?
No, not, so there, so there have been two or three members of the police, of the Ottawa police who have been linked financially. They're just regular members of the police and they are being held to account now. They're being investigated now. But the resign, the resignations were less over a lack of preparedness than a lack of action afterward. So the citizens of Ottawa were very disturbed. You know, we're quite a, I'm sure, I'm sure you Americans, you know, think of us Canadians as boring. And if you can think of the most boring among.
We think of you as nice.
Then, yeah, then, then, you know, Ottawa is, you know, it's a very, very nerdy city. So it's all, it's tech and policy, basically. So it just walks all, all the way through. And, you know, we're quite a law abiding group of folk and, you know, we're, our city's 94% vaccinated, et cetera. So, but we're used to protests, right? It's not as, it is still the capital city, but we were not used to, I can't think of another situation in which we had ever seen a protest quite like this, where the public were the target. And so that I think was very shocking to people and the police seemed not to be doing anything. And again, we don't know what the background is there. You know, the chief of police kept saying, we're trying to avoid provoking violence, which is, you know, if they had just been here for the weekend, might have made sense. Like, okay, let them be raucous for a couple of days, then they'll leave. You know, the key thing is let's not spark some kind of violent altercation where people are actually going to get hurt. So if it had just been the weekend, that might've been fine, but then it dragged on week after week and the police were just sort of standing there, not enforcing the law, not protecting people. And that was really, really shocking to the, to the citizens, the sense of suddenly being completely vulnerable to a breakdown in public order, you know, not, not being able to have faith in the police to protect us, especially once things sort of escalated to, I'm not sure if you heard down there about the arson incident where two men went and started a fire in a residential building and, and taped the doors of the building during the night. And so people were quite, I mean, luckily no one was hurt. The residents, you know, found the fire and put it out. But this was, they believe in response to the fact that residents of the building had been shouting at the protesters overnight.
Oh, my God.
There was a lot of fear and, and the police were just not there. And so, so that was the, that was the accountability. That was the failure right there. So even if they had not anticipated that the protesters were going to entrench in this way, the failure to protect our sense of safety was really the thing that, that the citizens of this city were, wanted to see the police held accountable.
So you said something a couple of minutes ago about how they were targeting the public. You know, was, why did they, I think the question, I, we don't understand here is, you know, go to Ottawa because it's the capital, you know, we're used to associating going to the capital to target lawmakers or to pressure lawmakers or, you know, because capitals represent the government. But you're saying that they were targeting the public? And then the second question is, where were these truckers coming from? You know, I'm assuming they weren't part of big tech, you know, wonk, 94 vaccinated, given especially that it was a protest against vaccinations.
So, so first of all, the, it's important to keep in mind that, okay, so the vast majority of the protesters were coming from outside of Ottawa, but the vast majority of truckers are also vaccinated. It's about 90%, right? We have to be careful, you know, we keep saying the truckers, the truckers, but of course, the truckers are, are as diverse as, as everyone else. They're racially diverse, they're, they're gender diverse. My cousin, my female cousin is a trucker or has been a trucker and, and they were overwhelmingly vaccinated. So, so we do have to be a little bit careful. You know, we keep saying the truckers, but they're a very diverse bunch of people. So, so, but most of them were coming from outside the city. That is true, although there is support, there was support from within the city too. And this is one of the areas where the situation becomes quite interesting politically is that, is if you look at who within the city of Ottawa were supporting the truckers, it was the yoga studios, for example. And, and so we, we again see how politics that sort of converge around vaccine issue, that converge around right wing issues are not what we expect them to be. They're not falling along the lines of cleavages that we normally expect, whether that's in terms of identity or whether that's in terms of right, left, or in terms of class, that there seems to be something new happening here. And that might also help to explain why the convoy is using this really vague terminology of, you know, freedom, 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 which of course is, is, you know, an endlessly elastic term, because it provides a sort of a touch point where people can converge around an idea. So where you can sort of build solidarity from a group of people who are actually, you know, quite diverse. So of course there are white supremacist leaders and there are people who are willing to stand next to white supremacists. And then there are people who were there for lots of other reasons as well. And they're all sort of, they're building a coalition around this, you know, freedom idea without really explaining what that means. And, and that's something we have to pay attention to in terms of the way that politics is, is changing. So there are three, you know, three things here. One is the prevention issue. The second is the accountability issue. And the third is understanding how politics is changing and how, seeing how this convoy played out may help us understand what's coming.
That's, it's, that's a really important marker. I mean, I think we've noticed this, we've covered this extensively on our show, just the different groups that say, you know, media is a big part of this, you know, social media and, and like these, these types of shows that we do now, where it's very decentralized and you may have, it's like a pipeline. There's a propaganda pipeline out there. You know, you might be somebody who's into the spiritual movement and, and into spirituality and yoga, which frankly I am, and I have a lot of my friends that I've seen online get radicalized because they distrusted the vaccines, they distrust the government, you know? And, and there's a lot of reason obviously to distrust Big Pharma and, and, and the government for, for doing a lot of horrible things. But it's, it's, it's being, it's predatory. You know, the right wing has seen this as an opportunity to prey on different communities and somehow loop them in at whatever their sticking point is, whatever the thing that brings them in. Suddenly the next thing you know is your yoga instructor is hosting white nationalists that have showed up, you know, via trucks. It's, it's, you're right. I think this is a really, really important point that we need to delve into more and needs to be openly expressed more and, and considered because if people don't understand, you know, where, where this is coming from, they could also fall victim to it. So in terms of, I mean, it's, it's interesting. You say that the trucker, the truckers who did show up were not from Ottawa. Were there certain regions, were they being organized in one area and being dispersed and pushed to Ottawa? Or, you know, I guess where were they being recruited? In the States, you know, we know that there's right wing media that the trucking community is, it, it's easy to listen to these right wing talk shows on the radio and left doesn't really have radio in, in our country. So, you know, there's been a lot of research about how information was being spread, at least in the States, but I'm very curious how that plays out earlier in Canada.
So first of all, I should point out that, you know, my main area of expertise is states of emergency. So, so I can't speak to, to, you know, specifically to those sort of communication techniques that led up to the convoy. I can say that, first of all, again, we're talking about a tiny minority of truckers. So, so that needs to be kept, kept in mind that, that also, you know, again, if we're sort of looking at these questions of cleavages and, you know, do we see this as a class issue? Do we see this as an urban rural issue? So certainly there's some focus in the West here. So if you look at two of the main leaders of the convoy movement, Tamara Litch and I think it's King as well, but it might've, sorry, I think it's King, but certainly Tamara Litch are sort of associated with this West separatist movement in Canada, which basically is advocating for the Western, you know, all the provinces west of Ontario and the three Northern Territories to secede. Now, just again, to put this into perspective, they got point, 0.2% of the popular vote and no seats in parliament. So this is, this is a really fringe, fringe, fringe movement. And, and even with the, so, so Dichter was running or, you know, was associated with the People's Party of Canada, which is sort of the furthest right party. And it also has just a, you know, a really tiny fraction of support. So it's easy because the trucks are big and the media is big, right? To, to, to see this as a bigger problem in term, or a bigger, you know, challenge, I shouldn't say, you know, all democratic discussion is important and rich and we don't want to, you know, say, so it's a, we'll call it a challenge rather than a problem. But to see this as a, as a bigger challenge than it is, but at the same time, we have to, we, we would be, it would, it would be a mistake to minimize it too, because it is, you know, it's a, whatever it is, this sort of drawing people together, this distrust, right? This sense of, you know, not knowing what kind of authority to turn to, which may be the thing that's sort of helping to draw like the yoga community together with white supremacists, is, that is much more pervasive.
Interesting.
So, so there was a poll that came out, I think yesterday, or the day before in Canada that showed that just a vast majority of Canadians felt that they were angrier, more upset, more distrustful of each other, less inclined to help each other. And just generally the sense of a loss of trust in institutions, a trust in authority. And that probably was building before the pandemic, but I think was exacerbated by the pandemic. And so this may just be, you know, if we think about the convoy as sort of like one way that this more general worrying phenomenon is bubbling up in a small portion of the population, but that more general phenomenon is something that we, you know, as citizens on both sides of the border, you know, need to, need to engage. Because if you cannot trust authority, that doesn't mean you don't want authority. You just cast for some other authority and heaven knows what, well, we've seen the sorts of things that can happen now.
That's, it's a very important point. It's like, you know, we see this play out. It's like we, I think the question is, okay, you don't trust authority because they failed in the past and there's a distrust of institutions because they're not performing the way that they were designed and very unstable times. Does that mean that you don't believe in democracy? And, you know, these are big, big, big questions, I think, that we're all kind of grappling with right now. So Trudeau though, speaking of democracy, Trudeau stood up very clearly and clamped down on these protests pretty early on. I'm curious, like, how did the Canadian people respond to this? Is this precedent for him to do something like that or any prime minister too?
Well, that's a, that's an excellent question. So Trudeau, as you may know, Trudeau's father was also prime minister a very long time ago. And in 1970, when there was a separatist terrorist movement in Quebec, Trudeau, the first prime minister Trudeau, used the War Measures Act, which was a pretty serious piece of legislation, to call the army out into the streets of Montreal to deal with this terrorist movement that had, you know, murdered politicians and diplomats and they were blowing up mailboxes, et cetera. And this at the time was a very popular move. So people really supported him, but then the powers were abused, there were mass arrests. The RCFP who were in charge of exercising those powers really, really did abuse their power. And there was an inquiry afterward and that was why the War Measures Act was scrapped. And as history has, you know, as time has moved on, although Canadians really supported that early on, now it sort of generally recognizes like a black mark on the, the brain of the first prime minister Trudeau. So we may be seeing the same kind of thing play out again with Trudeau the younger. So there was a massive, massive support. I think it was something like 70% of Canadians supported the use of the Emergencies Act. And, you know, we may want to touch on this question of, okay, people supported it. Okay, it was effective. Does that entail that it was the right thing to do? Cause I think those are separate questions. But, you know, and, and I think he made a good, it was a good move that the, the act was used quickly and effectively, and then the powers were put down quickly. That was important, both morally, but also politically.
And, and quick question then, what does that mean? What does the emergency act mean? What happens?
Okay, so when we got rid of the War Measures Act, which was really for wartime, during peacetime, the Canadian government, the Justice Department spent years and years and years very carefully developing this piece of legislation, the Emergencies Act, which sets out four different kinds of emergency. So public health or, or sorry, like a, an emergency that, that might be related to like a natural disaster or that kind of thing, public order emergency, all the way up to a war emergency. And it gears the powers that the government can use to address that emergency, gear carefully the seriousness of the situation. The idea is instead of this blanket emergency thing where like there's an emergency, you can do whatever, which is what a lot of states, a lot, a lot of states' emergency legislation says, it says, here is, here are the things you can do and only these things in this kind of situation. And it builds in all of these checks and balances along the way. So the prime minister can ask the governor general to declare the emergency, but then parliament has to give it, has to approve it, both the House of Commons and the Senate. And if they don't approve it, it's gone. So it can't be, you know, just unilateral executive power. Then you have the Parliamentary Review Committee, which is just getting up and going now, which examines every single action taken under the Emergencies Act and can also, you know, help scuttle the act as a whole, because only a handful of MPs can call or members of parliament can call for the, for another debate in parliament, which could just get rid of the act. So we have all these checks and balances, all of these safeguards in this Emergencies Act to help prevent the kinds of abuses that we saw with the War Measures Act early, early on. So Trudeau used it, he was the first one to use it, he used it fast, he gave the powers back. Now we're having the Parliamentary Review Committee, we're going to have an inquiry. And, and this question, like, okay, it was effective, okay, people supported it, but was it strictly necessary? This is what we're gonna, we're gonna see next.
Is there a sense, you know, now that there's been at least a beginning of a review of who was funding this? Was there funding behind this? Obviously there, we saw some Facebook groups pop up and, and that's happening all over the world. That could be organic, it could also be boosted, but is there any sense?
So there, there was information leading up to the declaration of the Emergencies Act that through the GoFundMe platform and the other funding platforms, that about half the money was coming from the United States. And that was of course, you know.
Individuals or organizations?
I'm, I'm not sure exactly. Certainly a lot of individuals. I'm not sure about organizations. So, so certainly that was a matter for some concern. People did point out that the same thing is true when there are environmental protests in Canada, that a lot of the money supporting those protests also comes globally. And so there were, you know, questions, you know, all the way through, people were saying, okay, are we using a double standard here?
I mean, the implications, let me just intercept there. I, if, if you are drilling in Canada and, and on indigenous land, I think that like there are more global implications than vice versa, sorry, just.
I mean, and there are, of course, there are global implications for the convoy as well. And I'm not, so I'm not personally taking a position on whether, you know, whether that's ever appropriate, just that people had raised these, these kinds of questions with respect to the funding. It might be useful for people to know that all of those funds are still frozen and there is a class action lawsuit that, that was launched by citizens of Centertown in Ottawa. And so all those funds that were donated are frozen and are being held in escrow pending the result of that lawsuit. And so all those funds that people donated might end up going to compensate the businesses that lost, you know, collectively, but the, you know, tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars and the citizens who, who. And the citizens who, who had to put up with this, you know, relentless, permanent hearing loss causing noise, et cetera. So that money is now frozen in escrow pending the, the hearing on, on this lawsuit.
And where, where were they saying the money was going to go anyways? I mean, what did it, gas or was it paying people?
So, so my understanding, and again, you know, this is not my areas of expertise, was that it was meant to compensate truckers for the cost of food and the cost of fuel. And, you know, they had set up this whole carnival. There was a bouncy castle. There was a, a hot tub. They were setting up, you know, food stalls and, you know, right across from my office in, in the, in the public park, they'd basically like taken the whole thing over and set up all of these like, you know, festival type, type things. So, so my understanding was that that was what the money was for. We do know that Tamara Litch, for example, had $1.3 million that she had taken from this fund in her personal account. That's also been frozen in escrow. She handed that over. It's been frozen in escrow pending the result of, of these lawsuits. It's also worth noting that under both the provincial state of emergency and the national or, well, I believe also the national, but certainly, certainly under the provincial state of emergency, the organizers can be held liable for the costs of resolving an emergency that they caused. So these tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars that, and then of course that, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars in, in losses from the, from, from blocking the border could end up being a liability for the organizers.
Was anybody hurt? You, you mentioned hearing loss, but were there any other sorts of physical, was anybody hurt along the way, like confronting them or anything else?
So it, it's worth noting that the police, once, you know, once the Emergencies Act came into force and there was this cooperation between the RCMP, the Royal Canadian Police, that is, the Ontario Provincial Police and the local police and police forces, members of police forces from across Canada who came to help out, that that was pretty much, you know, if you're going to have police action in a demonstration situation, extremely well behaved. And as far as we know, someone was very slightly injured. But other than that, a situation which couldn't become very violent, did not. And that's something that hopefully will help restore some faith in, in our local police. Before that, in terms of altercations with the protesters, I know that the police are currently investigating 400 different incidents that, that took place. So there was a situation where some protesters went, some convoy members went and tried to get food from the Shepherds of Good Hope, which is a downtown homeless service or service provision center. So you can get clothes, you can get help with finding housing and jobs, et cetera. And they did, they were told they could not access meals there and then beat up a a person of, of color, homeless person of color, and they were shouting slurs at the security guards. They knocked down, we have a very much beloved little local ice cream shop and and, and one of the employees was knocked down, knocked to the ground on his way to, to work and yelled at for wearing a mask. These are just the situations that I know about personally, but we know there are 400. And then one of my students who was out having a cigarette, luckily had his dog with him, had some protesters walk by and start yelling homophobic slurs at him and threatening to beat him up. And so he was very, you know, shaken and upset. So certainly there was a, there was an air of disorder and violence that was quite unnerving to, to residents. And, you know, and, and again, there were plenty of convoy members who were peaceful. And we should be glad that this didn't erupt into mass violence, which we were all very worried about. So, you know, this could have been much, much worse. But, but at the same time, we do need to be aware that there were these, you know, very horrible violent incidents. Notably that, that the arson, which really scared people, you know, understandably. And just, just the sense that a fear walking down the street, we became afraid of our own flag. Because that became simple, right? And so my kid, and my kid had to cross from our, cross the police line to get to school. And so just having to brief your young child as she walks to school, like what to do, you know, not to make eye contact, what to do if she sees violence, et cetera. These were things that, that certainly in our boring sleepy little capital, were not things we were used to.
And how many days did it go on for?
Three?
How many days did it go on for?
It was about three weeks.
Three weeks, okay.
Yeah, I think 23 days.
Is there, I still have been talking about it a little bit. Is there any sense that this, this may pick up again?
Sorry, I missed that.
Is, is there any sense that this may pick up again?
I don't think so, in part because, or not in this particular form. In part because the police now, you know, have assured everyone that they are ready to prevent that kind of entrenchment from happening again. Also, the organizers have all been arrested. Some of them have been let out on bail, some not. Their assets are still frozen for the time being. And certainly we see these like massive financial consequences. So if they're, they're held liable, that's going to make people think twice about the way that they express themselves politically. So again, we want people to express themselves politically. We just don't want them holding the public hostage. You had asked earlier about, about that, and I don't think I addressed it at the time, that some of the organizers were basically saying, look, people of Ottawa, you know, we're sorry that you're having a rough time, but that's because we want you to tell your governor general, this is just a massive misunderstanding of how our democracy works, that she needs to throw out the elected government. So the convoy and together with her, she's the Queen's representative. Form a new government. So this was really truly absurd. But the idea was to sort of pressure us to pressure the governor general for whatever that's worth. And that really is just not, that's not acceptable democratic behavior. You don't try to throw out the democratically elected government by torturing the, the citizens of a capital city. Express yourself, yell, say what you want, but, but that is just not appropriate democratic behavior.
Where have I heard that before? January 6th? It's unreal. Professor, really, really fascinating. Thank you so much for this update on, on the convoy. And hopefully, you know, this won't happen again in any form or rebuild, you know, in any other city in the world right now. Maybe gas prices will affect it, that alone. But it's, it's really an interesting aspect of our unrest right now. And I'm sorry that it's, it really had to take a toll on your community in Ottawa. Because, you know, citizens don't deserve that. So thank you so much for joining us. And from one Nomi to another, I appreciate that.
And just, you know, to end on an up note, I don't think that our community has for a long time felt as tightly connected. Everyone signs up in their windows that say, we love our city. We scroll, we love our neighbors on our window. And so the upside is when you go through something together, it builds solidarity and, and that can also be a good thing.
Indeed, indeed. And hopefully more of it. Professor Nomi Claire Lazar, thank you very much for joining us and hope to see you again soon.
Thank you very much.
All right, we will be right back with our next guest. We're going to be talking about what's going on in, oh boy, we've in, in, in the prison industrial complex is where I'm going to leave it. And how climate is affecting the prison industrial complex with Eileen Brown. All right. So I did not sleep well last night. Hate to break it to everyone. That's why I'm looking a little pale today. I didn't sleep well last night because my Twitter alerts were waking me up. I'll just leave that there. If you know what I'm talking about, you know what I'm talking about. But, you know, luckily I was able to eventually get to sleep and get a couple of hours of shut eye because I use Sunset Lake CBD. Sunset Lake CBD has been my go-to sleep aid for a bit now. Basically, you know, I learned about them from Sam Seder. Sam Seder was raving about CBD. I was like, I think it's a scam because I had tried some, you know, from some like Bodega that I spent a hundred bucks on. And he's like, no, 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 you gotta try Sunset Lake. And then I did, and he was right. It really, really helped. I started with the gummies. I then got addicted to the gummies. So now I've weaned off the gummies and which you should definitely try the gummies. But I use the CBD oil. I drop a little bit in my water or my tea at night. The CBD oil now comes with melatonin, so it'll help you go to sleep and stay asleep. The CBD helps you stay asleep. Unfortunately, I didn't do it at the beginning of the night. I had to do it midway through the night around five o'clock in the morning, which is real fun. But luckily I have the product. Sunset Lake CBD is a farmer-owned company that ships craft CBD products directly from their farm in Vermont that, that used to be a dairy farm, a Ben &amp; Jerry's dairy farm. They decided to diversify it and now they grow premium hemp and they send it right from their farm to your door. They take care of their workers and when you take care of them, they're supporting and enhancing their rural economy. Because rural economies unfortunately are not supported as we know. But Sunset Lake CBD is doing everything they can to make sure that the community that they support in Vermont is completely supported through having a $15 minimum wage, having their employees owe the majority of their company. And then on top of that all, they give back to independent shows like ours and the David Pakman Show. And of course, The Majority Report. You can go to sunsetlakecbd.com today and you will get 20% off of your order. If you type in Nomi, N-O-M-I, go to sunsetlakecbd.com, type in Nomi. And they've got all sorts of new products right now out there. You know, I've, I've been hearing from folks who like the dog biscuits. I think it's something that if you've had small dogs in particular, they get really a lot of anxiety when you leave. And the, the dog biscuits help. They're also full of, it's, it's purely like natural ingredients. I think you can eat the dog biscuits if you want to. I think Sam Seder may have at one point. But it totally chills out your dog if they get a lot of anxiety. Mine gets anxiety. He starts chewing on his, oh, it's so sad. They, he chews on his own skin and then he, he has to wear the little cone for a long time because he just doesn't. But the CBD has definitely helped him and I know it's helped other people as well. Go to sunsetlakecbd.com, type in Nomi, N-O-M-I, and you will get 20% off of your entire order. And check out all the other sales. They have a ton of sales all the time with lots of interesting products. Go check it out, sunsetlakecbd.com. All right, guys. Our next guest is going to tell us about the state of affairs. The state of affairs in our criminal justice system. We've had Eileen Brown on before. She's a New York-based reporter for The Intercept. She focuses on environmental injustice, environmental justice issues, excuse me. And right now she has a series out, a brand new series titled Climate and Punishment. It's jarring, frankly. Eileen, thanks for joining us.
Thank you so much for having me.
So this is obviously a beat that you've been working on for a while, but I, I'm actually quite shocked that there hasn't been any reporting on, extensive reporting at least, on how the criminal justice system is, is, pushes up against climate. And to see what you've come out with, it seems, it's already a rough human rights situation in so many prisons across this country. Add to it how climate is affecting, it, it, it seems hard to ignore. So what led you in this direction?
Yeah, I mean, I think it was exactly what you're talking about, you know? I think increasingly when a big hurricane happens, when a wildfire happens and it's impacting people who are incarcerated, in the rare cases that they, you know, people are advocate, people who are incarcerated or advocates connect with the media, you more and more see these fast pieces kind of reacting to these crises. And so I really wanted to find a way to do something that steps back a little bit and looked more comprehensively about how the climate crisis is impacting detention facilities. So, you know, I started talking to my colleague, senior research engineer Akil Harris, about potentially doing something with all these data sets, you know, combining these data sets of, you know, we have one with 6,500 detention facilities from the Department of Homeland Security. And then there's lots of data sets looking at, you know, flood risk, wildfire risk, storm risk, heat risk. You know, I thought we could find a way to put these things together. So Akil is amazing with data and he was really the one who created this big interactive map where you can search almost any detention facility in the US and find out what kind of heat risk, wildfire risk and flood risk it has.
How, how are you able to even get that data?
You know, it really relied on partnerships with people who have been working with each of these individual, in each of these individual areas. So there's a team of researchers at UCLA led by Nick Shapiro. They're called the Carceral Ecologies Project. And they, Nick had already been looking at the way this big database of facilities was being impacted by other kinds of environmental issues like water quality issues. So the Carceral Ecologies folks were really key to figuring out how to work with the, the prison data. And then, you know, for heat data, we worked with Union of Concerned Scientists, this really great nonprofit that had looked at county by county heat data and how the heat is going to increase in the coming years as the climate crisis deepens. For the flood data, we teamed up with an organization called the First Street Foundation that has property-specific risk ratings. You know, more for residential properties, but we found a way to make it work for these prison campuses. And then finally, the federal government put together wildfire risk database a couple of years ago. And we worked closely with their contractor Pyrologics. This guy Joe Scott is a really great wildfire researcher who helped us figure out how to work with the wildfire data. So, you know, it was really a lot of people involved in making this happen.
So let's, let's start with the heat risk. What, what, what kind of things did you discover?
Yeah, I mean, so we discovered that there, people who are incarcerated are already facing really severe issues with heat. We found that about a third of the detention facilities across the US already are located in counties that see more than 50 days a year with heat indexes over 90 degrees. You know, which is enough to make people dealing with a range of health issues quite sick. A lot of these facilities don't have air conditioning. You know, that's something that our data doesn't quite capture is which facilities have the infrastructure to manage some of these problems and which don't at all. You know, we also found that the number of facilities at that heat level will rise to about three quarters of the detention facilities currently existing in the US by 2100. Even more worrisome perhaps, you know, today, no carceral institution is located in a county with more than 50 days a year at 105 degrees, which is a level that the National Weather Service considers dangerous. By 2100, almost 700 facilities will be, mostly in Texas, Florida, Louisiana. So, you know, this is already a really severe problem and it's about to get much worse.
I mean, we're looking at the map right now for, for our podcast listeners. And I'm, I'm just floored by how many prisons there are in this country and jails. I, I, I mean, I know this isn't even a complete map and I'm, when you see it visually and, and just how many are in your town, like if you zoom into Arizona right now, I mean, there's only so many cities in Arizona. It's, you hear about the large prisons, but it's, it's really jarring and I'm sure that there's many that aren't even on this map. Wow.
Yeah.
So in terms of, of wildfire risk, wildfires are obviously happening all throughout the year now, we're learning. How does that impact a prison? And what did you learn?
Yeah, so, you know, we focused especially on California in our reporting since California has been so, you know, deeply impacted by wildfires. And I think that's where we're starting to see some people organize around issues of wildfires. And I can talk a little bit about that. But I would also say that one of the most notable things, or one of the most surprising things to me was the way that the wildfire risk that facilities across the US are facing, you know, particularly Florida. I think Florida had more state facilities facing extreme wildfire risk than California. You know, it doesn't get a lot of attention for this, but the vegetation on top of some of these swampy areas is hot enough to kind of travel across that wet landscape. And actually, right now, Florida is facing some pretty significant wildfires that have caused, can't remember if it's a jail or a prison, but a detention facility to evacuate.
Interesting. And it's the panhandle.
Yeah, exactly. Of course, the surrounding community began to evacuate. Of course, the surrounding community began to evacuate, you know, at least several days before the detention facility was finally evacuated. So I would say, oh, go ahead.
And when prisoners voice concern, I mean, I know this is in your reporting, what are they met with? I mean, do they have advocates fighting for them on, on, you know, being able to evacuate if there's a fire risk? This is insane.
Yeah, I mean, I think that people's biggest advocates are always family members. It's often loved ones and family members that are connecting to advocates with more access to, I guess policymakers. So via those like loved ones advocacy, there has started to be some organizing around getting facilities evacuated when wildfires are in the area. You increasingly see people, I think in California for, for one of the fires in the last couple of years, people actually showed up to the head of the corrections department's home, kind of demanding evacuations. But, you know, they still tend to, evacuation still tend to be much more rare for detention facilities than for the, the surrounding communities. And corrections departments tend to be very sort of hesitant to share information about what their emergency plans are, what their evacuation plans are. A lot of people just don't, without transparency, a lot of people don't believe that they're very robust.
Wow, that's unbelievable. Okay, and, and in terms of flooding, I can imagine many parts of the country are going to be severely affected by climate change and floods.
Yeah, so we identified more than 600 facilities across the US facing major to extreme flood risk. We really honed in on one facility in Florida that experienced flooding this past year. That's the Cross City Detention Facility, or it's a state prison.
Where's that in Florida, like just for context?
Yep, yep, that's in Florida.
And where in Florida, where in Florida?
Yeah, so it's kind of, I don't know if it's quite the panhandle, but it's sort of in that inner arc along the Gulf Coast. And it's in a, you know, quite rural county, Dixie County, that flooded really severely over the summer, but got hardly any national attention. This county, a lot of the county's economy relies on the prison, you know, to, to function. And so as people were, people's homes were being inundated, the prison was too. You know, one person who was incarcerated said that his cell was flooded with ankle deep water, with human waste floating in the water, you know, and was stuck there for several hours before there was an evacuation. But one thing I think that is, is really important to note, especially where it comes to flooding, is that it's not just facilities that we identified as having significant flood risk that are flooding. Cross City does have severe flood risk according to our database. However, we noted a number of facilities with a history of flooding that don't have high flood risk. The issue is not that they're in a flood risky area. It's that the infrastructure itself can't handle, you know, storms and precipitation events.
That's interesting. So it's, it's, they were never designed to, to deal with any sort of extreme weather. And now with more extreme weather, it's, it's further pushing it to the limits. Have you been able to document, you know, I know it's sometimes difficult with climate change, but have you been able to document any deaths related to climate change in these facilities, at least over the past few years?
Um, I mean, I think that where you see the most deaths is where it comes to extreme heat events. It's actually the deaths of incarcerated people in Texas that have forced the state to begin to install air conditioning in more facilities. You know, they're way behind on that. But I would also say that with heat, a lot of times a death that might be associated with heat is not documented as such. You know, you might have an existing health problem that's really exacerbated by being in a place with no air conditioning for an extended period of time or that's exacerbated by a sudden spike in heat, you know, a sudden heat wave that your body is prepared to handle. If you have a heart attack and it happens to be on a hot day, the corrections department isn't necessarily going to document it, document it as being heat related.
I'm shocked. Aline, has there been any, since you've been doing this reporting, you know, you mentioned Texas is, is trying to install air conditioners, but have you seen any other sort of progress? Any organizations speaking out, anything?
Yeah, so I would say that people are increasingly organizing around this issue. I mentioned California, there's a coalition called The Curb that is demanding, I mean, they're saying that they don't want California facilities to invest in infrastructure and repairs. Rather, they want 10 facilities closed in the next five years. And one of the things that they're focused on is kind of environmental problems, the impact of the wildfires. You know, in some places, generators have failed when, as the wildfires strike. So this infrastructure issue is a real problem. They don't want the state to pour money into infrastructure. They want facilities shut down. The other place I would note is, is again, Texas. Family members and loved ones of people who have been impacted by the heat while incarcerated have really started to organize around, or have organized for the past few years around Texas installing air conditioning in its state prisons. Really a grassroots efforts that led, that's led by the loved ones of incarcerated people or formerly incarcerated people.
Jesus, this is really important reporting. Thank you so much, Aline, for, for bringing this to light and for sharing it. And I hope, you know, as you continue to, to learn more, please share it with us because we'd love to get the word out as much as possible. Aline Brown, thank you as always for joining us. You can go check out the Climate and Punishment series at The Intercept. Aline is a reporter for The Intercept and she focuses on environmental justice issues. Go check out her reporting there, it's really in depth and wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right, we'll be right back after this break. We're going to talk about the war on education and how this is, how the right wing is organizing aggressively against the Democrats. And really like what are the roots behind it because it is a much bigger story than meets the eye.
Are being counted somewhere that today that somewhere is in San Francisco. The school board recall election, it's being fueled by backlash to some progressive policies. But more than that, that'd be a potential warning sign to progressives everywhere. When you have the phrase even liberal San Francisco parents, well, they're signaling they've hit their limits, then you know you may have a political problem. Three school board members, including the president, Gabriela Lopez, are up for recall in the solidly Democratic city for pursuing symbolic liberal causes like renaming schools, you know, from people like Dianne Feinstein as classrooms stayed shut due to pandemic restrictions. Recall effort has the backing of Democratic Mayor London Breed. She had that enough is enough speech on shoplifting a few weeks back. And according to the San Francisco Chronicle, has attracted nearly $2 million in campaign spending. So folks parental anger has been a force ever since schools went remote. And the political fallout around this issue has only intensified as we approach the midterms. And it hasn't mattered if it's in blue America or red America.
Okay, well, thank you Chuck Todd for your insights on how blue America and red America should exist without teachers. Like that's really the message we should be pushing out on MSNBC. Okay, guys, let's just take a moment and digest what's happening. And, you know, this is San Francisco, San Francisco in a blue state, in a blue city with a blue mayor who is supposed to be, I don't know, supporting the people who backed the Democratic Party, the largest union in the country, largest public service workers. In this moment when workers are under attack, this is happening. And I, I think we really need to digest this and register what's happening. I am so grateful that our next guest has been on the front lines of this. She's one of the three members who have been facing the attacks. Commissioner Allison Collins is the former Board of Election Commissioner for the San Francisco Unified School District, recently recalled because what on earth? Okay, Allison, thank you so much for joining us just to start with that. And I am so sorry that you've had to go through this. You know, I do want to also note that I find it fascinating that the three people that were being recalled are also, you know, women and people of color, so.
And educators.
And educators, of course, yes. Okay, um, where do I even begin with this? First of, how are you doing? Let's start with that.
I'm doing well, I think, considering, this has been going on for a really long time. And you talk to any, anybody who served in education at all, right? Teachers right now are burning out like crazy. But school board members across the country have been under unprecedented attack for the last year. So I think anybody who's just, you know, able to persist and, you know, it's been incredibly difficult to do any, you know, real work with all these school board attacks, recalls and things like that. But I think, you know, this is a volunteer job. This isn't, most of us don't get paid and you look across the country, most of the folks who volunteer to do this work do it because they love public education and they love, you know, love school, public schools. And so, you know, I don't know what else to say. I'm grateful to have been able to serve during the pandemic because I think at least in San Francisco, as compared to other parts of the country, we were able to, to take a lot of steps to keep our communities a lot safer than we're seeing across the nation.
Um, I think it's so important that you said it's a volunteer job because, you know, teachers across this country are really not paid anywhere near a livable wage. I have, my mother was a teacher, I have family members, I'm very close to the teaching community, very good friends of mine who in Arizona were part of the red state revolt there. And I have, one of my friends in particular, I talked to recently, has two children and, you know, they, they can barely pay their rent in Arizona. And they've been forced to move many times, but they're so dedicated to teaching that it's, it's, it's really kind of beautiful to see that kind of dedication from, from folks who are so invested in, in making sure that we preserve our, our basis. I mean, this is, this is the basis of democracy. This is what's going to get us out of whatever mess we're in. So it's, it's really horrifying to see, especially in San Francisco, these type of efforts successful. So I, I know that you guys have issued a report, a recall report. I want to start with just how it happened. Like how did this happen? Why San Francisco and, and, you know, why your school board?
Well, I'll tell you, it's actually happening across the country. And I think, I just, I appreciate shows like this where we can really have meaningful conversations. As you know, most of the mainstream media, it's about soundbites and a lot of it is, is funded by PR companies. And, you know, what, what I'm seeing nationally is an attack on education, public education specifically. And so when you look at the larger context, San Francisco is no different than any other part of the country right now. You have an unprecedented number of, of recalls this year. In 2006 to 2020, there was an average of 23 recalls a year against 22 school board members. This past year, you had 84 as compared to 23 and against 215 members. So you see a huge spike in recalls nationally. You also see, you know, just all this energy right now with these, you know, the Republican Party last year became the party of parents with, and, you know, they credited that messaging and that strategy to winning the Glenn Youngkin, you know, election. You have also just a rise of recalls related to school reopening and parents, quote, parents coming into schools and, you know, raging against wokeness through anti CRT policies as well as, you know, there's also a weaponization of the, the South Asian hate movement with this, you know, you're seeing Asian American conservative groups fighting against affirmative action. So, so all of those, there's a confluence of, of things that's been happening nationally. And basically what you see is, is the Republican Party and right wing, you know, they've, they understand that if they want to take back power, they're going to mess with our right to vote, but they're also going to take back local elections. And, and school boards are pathways to power, right? Most people, I'm running because I actually am an educator and I want, I want to stay on the school board. But a lot of folks enter into school boards and, you know, local county offices and then they move on to higher office. And so this is really a national strategy and, and you see it. I mean, they're telling us what their strategy is. You have Steve Bannon has said, we're taking action. And that action we are taking is we are taking over school boards. He said that, right? You have Chris Ruffo, who, who crafted the whole anti CRT. It's a campaign, it's a messaging campaign. And he said, it's time to clean house in America, remove the attorney general, lay siege on the universities, abolish the teachers unions and overturn school boards. They are telling us what they're doing. And for some reason mainstream media wants to kind of approach this as a whole bunch of individual issues like San Francisco.
That's right, that's right.
All the woke people, and then you have Florida, you have parents that are mad about CRT. You know, obviously, San Francisco, you're not going to sell a strategy of anti CRT in San Francisco, but what you did have was you had parents upset about school renaming. Or you have parents that are mad that we desegregated one of our elite high schools, right? Those are, those are issues that involve race and segregation and these kind of culture war issues. But it's just, it's really just a messaging campaign. You have some really standard, you know, messaging and arguments, but then they just get tailored for a local market. And so in San Francisco, we don't have any successful Republican candidates. So you have moderates and you have Democrats. In, in other cities, they would be probably running as Republicans. And so that's why I think it's, it's, it is, you know, we can all, we can disagree as Democrats as well. But I think it is very disingenuous to say that this is, you know, Democrats versus progressives when you have $500,000 being funded by actual Republicans. Like $2 million for, for a, for a recall election. And many of the donors are Republican donors. David Sacks fundraised for DeSantis in San Francisco. He was one of the primary donors. We have William Obendorf is also a Republican billionaire. So, you know, there were parents, Democratic parents who also voted for the recall. But I think largely this recall got its juice from, you know, neoliberals, Republicans and libertarians and corporate interests. I mean, we even had Visa and Wilkers Association, right? The charter associations, those are the organizations that were really fueling this effort, that got it on the ballot. And just like across the country, right? They weaponized parental frustration and anger about schools being closed. And also weaponized, you know, some of the old school anger about change. And so this is just another take back kind of America movement, but now we're seeing it's in San Francisco and, but utilizing the same tactics, really same messaging strategies that we're seeing nationally.
I mean, it's, it's so fascinating and I, I say this a lot on the show because I want people to understand as, as you're doing. You know, the teachers' union is, is, it's obviously teachers and educators have been on the front lines during this pandemic and have dealt with so many different issues along the way, not to mention these, these smear campaigns and actual political campaigns to, with a lot of money to take out educators for, you know, volunteer positions, as you said. But the largest public sector union, the largest public sector workers in this country are educators. The largest donors to the Democratic Party are the teachers' unions. If we don't think this is a Republican play to weaken Democrats, and I think we need to say this out loud more because London Breed or anybody, any Democrat who runs with the dean. who runs with the D next to them and is in office and supports these efforts should frankly, in my opinion, be exposed for not being in line with the Democratic Party. You want to weaken your party, you weaken teachers. And, and I think like, the word is out about charters at this point. So it doesn't, I don't, it doesn't look like this is a charter campaign, but obviously there's a lot of charter money going into this.
Well, where it's going honestly is vouchers. So charters are dead and you're seeing a lot of activity with vouchers. And, you know, with the pandemic, you saw a rise in homeschooling, which also that's privatized, unregulated education, right? So you talk to anybody who follows charters, they, you know, they were seeing this too. You know, even when we closed down and all these micro schools came up, those are also, you know, there, it's basically a way to privatize public education dollars, moving them out of local oversight. And that, and this is where it comes to democracy, right? I'm an elected official, if you don't like me, you wouldn't vote me out. But charters, there's no real oversight unless, you know, every few years you, you, you know, you go in and you say, okay, I'd like to renew my charter. But on a day to day basis, we have meetings every, like twice a month. Parents show up and they voice their concerns. You know, it's very easy to see, you know, your local government in action. When you go to, to vouchers or you go to, um, to chart, to charter schools, you're, you're basically allowing a private organization, even if it's a nonprofit, it's a private organization to manage those dollars and, and run public education. And so, you know, that's, you know, so it's, it's, you've, you've got, I think, really a confluence of, of interests. You've got, um, maybe more conservative voters who are unhappy that schools are embracing anti racist education, pro LGBTQ education, they don't like that. You have conservative, just, you know, Republican or right wing interests that see an opportunity to take political power through mobilizing parent anger. And then you also just have opportunists, people who can make money off the system. And I think that's why you see, um, charters. And then you also see the tech sector. There's a lot of opportunity, you know, for them as well, you know, as we've gone online, for them to make money. And, um, you know, so you, you have kind of, like I said, a confluence of interests coming together and seeing an opportunity during a time of really great distress for our country and based on the pandemic.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm happy you mentioned Steve Bannon because I caught an article in the New York Times. I've referenced quite a bit on the show in December where, uh, the Proud Boys proudly announced that they're running for city councils and school boards now. Proud Boys who, I'm going to guess are not educators. You know?
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not, I'm just gonna, I, I, help us find one. I'm very curious if there's one out there. But I mean, this is really the framing that I think is, is so important for people to understand. You know, you can have educators on these school boards who understand their communities, who understand the system, who understand the children, or you could have Proud Boys. And, you know, I just don't understand how someone like a London Breed, um, could so aggressively champion this. And have you had any sort of communication with her? What's, what is the teachers' union, um, whether it's local or national?
The teachers' union is a big issue because when you look at California, we educate the most children in the country as a state. And then you look at, um, California Teachers Association as the largest union in our state. So if you want to run for governor, you know, you, you want CTA backing you. And so it is a statewide issue and San Francisco definitely is a leader, right? When it comes to, um, districts in our state, we're one of the larger districts and we have influence on things like that. And, um, so, you know, there are, you know, like I said, we don't have, um, traditional, like in other states, you have Democrats and Republicans. We have, we have moderates and progressives, but, um, and, and Mayor Breed is associated with moderate kind of political party. And then we have, you know, progressives. So we have those similar kinds of battles in our city around, you know, who's in charge of City Hall and who makes decisions. And, and so there are, you know, not on a national scale, but locally, very important, kind of power plays happening with the school board, uh, because me and my colleague were considered progressive. And, you know, so those play out on a local level. But I also think, you know, our elections cost so much money. And if you want, you know, I ran my election for $40,000, it was grassroots, similar to my colleagues. In the last four elections, a, a million dollars was raised by school board candidates in total. And so to have a recall where they're, they're able to raise $2 million just for a recall election, right? That's a real signal to, you know, and some of the people behind the recall were failed Board of Ed candidates who raised more money. And so I think this is just really a way of, of kind of, folks are flexing, um, their power politically and, and, and showing that they can, if they can't run in a regular election, they're going to use recalls. I think it sets a very dangerous precedent in California. But, you know, you can flex their power and say, well, we don't have to run in a regular election. We can, we can do a recall election, which is a lower voter turnout election. And we can get candidates that weren't able to get elected in a regular election on there because we have, you know, less people of color voting and less working class votes. And, um, and so I think, you know, that's where I think it gets really troubling is that, um, it sets us up, you know, in California at least, you can recall anybody you don't like, in an off season election with enough cash.
You brought up such an interesting point and I want to reiterate it and maybe ask you the numbers if you have them. So this is, this is, this is not a normal election. So when you don't have it, you know, it's, it's low turnout in general happens, uh, in, in California, unfortunately. And, um, especially when it's not a presidential year. But then you, you know, municipal elections in particular are low turnout and pretty much everywhere on, on the country at this point. So it's extremely low turnout. But in terms of how low, can like?
So in a regular election, um, 75% of San Franciscans normally vote for a school board election.
That's actually great, by the way. That's a very great number compared to Los Angeles, which is like 9%, I think.
We're a very political city and it's, it's a small city in a sense. So it's kind of like a big town. And, you know, you, when you look at LA or, you know, New York, you have millions of people. San Francisco has about 800,000, maybe 900,000 people. But you get about 75% um, of the electorate voting. In the recall, you had 25%. So you have a much smaller percentage. And then the folks who vote are a different demographic than you would get normally. But additionally, I think what's also important is in, in a regular election, when I was raising money, you're asking everyone to help you get money. $500 is the max people can donate. But because this was a proposition, it wasn't an election. Because it's a proposition, there's no limit. So that's why you have somebody like Arthur Rock can drop $100,000 at a pop. And ultimately he ended up donating $500,000. That's a quarter of this whole budget.
Wow.
You can't, 500,000 compared to 500, right? So that's one person can have basically, you know, buy an election. And, and, and additionally, I think there's a win win for them because even if they lose, right? They've been able to amass a large amount of money and they can use it however they like. So, so if I'm running, I'm running for me. If I win or lose, that money I can kind of, you know, any leftover money, I can spend it here or there. But this is an opportunity for them to raise wildly, you know, great amounts of money. Even if they had lost this election, they can take that money and then funnel it into candidates that they want to run in the fall. And so I think the reason this is so important, and I'm really glad that you're doing the show is it's not, this is not just about San Francisco. This is what's happening nationally. And I think that's why you have former, um, Vice President Mike Pence kind of proing about, you know, yes, this is a, this is a repudiation of wokeness by the Democrats and kind of we're coming to get you. This is a national model that I think the Republicans are going to want to play out nationally. And, um, through these, um, irregular kind of elections and through, you know, in, in California, this ability to, to run a proposition and, and establish, basically they're, they're getting voter lists together.
I was, yes, exactly.
A whole bunch of fundraising.
It's an organizing mo, moment for them.
Right. And so even if they had lost, they would have kind of been ahead for the November election. And I think we're going to see this between now and November. All across the country, we're going to see, you know, people sharing this as a strategy for taking over kind of local political power. And then that is a play for 2024. So, uh, you know, that's very clear to me. Like if you've got Bannon and the Republican Party saying, this is our strategy, they're playing it out. And it's, it's, and they've invested in, in this model. If they can do it in San Francisco, then they can do it anywhere.
What I don't understand though is California, um, I mean, yes, it used to be a Republican state and, and there, you know, are parts of California that, uh, are definitely more conservative. It is a lot of money and effort to put into California, um, in which, I'm, unless I'm not seeing something and they're depending on low turnout on other parts, yeah.
I mean, California as a, as a state, we educate most of the children here. So when you look at school boards and like CTA is the largest union. So if you want to really disrupt, and also, you know, just looking at San Francisco, other than Los Angeles and Oakland, we've been able to really keep charters out of our district. One of the largest kind of proponents, you know, for, you know, so I'm a great target. But I think as a city, it's a smaller city and San Francisco doesn't like big box retailers. You know, so you just say, look, their Walmart pays for charters. And then people who don't even know anything about public schools will oppose them. They're, they're not popular. But if you can get charters into San Francisco, I think we are, you know, a real, um, trophy. And, and so I think that, that is why you would want to invest. I mean, if you've got somebody like Charlie Kirk regularly talks about San Francisco, right? And, you know, we're on, you know, the Tucker Carlson Show as, you know, regularly as when we advance, um, progressive policies. So to have this as a win is, is a feather in their cap. And, and, and I do think they've been, um, really, really honing, you know, their strategies. And, and I, I think, you know, you've got the on the ground strategy, but you also have tech. And you have a lot of disinformation, you know, Twitter, we have Twitter, we have Facebook. And what I've also noticed in this campaign is a really, uh, just intense amount of disinformation online that it, it's all existed, but a real explosion of weaponized targeted, harassment and, um, what, um, is Asha Rungapa, she's, she's a former FBI, um, agent. She talks about domestic information warfare. Um, and, and I think we're used to thinking of it on a national level. I think there are right wing folks who are figuring out how to, um, weaponize information. And if, if you're in a small, you know, San Francisco is a, maybe a big city, but it's small enough of a community that you can really disrupt how people get information. And that was, I think, one of the most frustrating things about this was just the amount of disinformation. With this whole idea that we didn't open schools because we were so focused on renaming schools is just misinformation. We weren't talking about it. But if you repeat something enough and enough, then people think, gosh, that seems really silly. You know, and I'm like, yes, it is silly, we didn't do it, you know, but it doesn't matter. And so.
Yes, exactly.
When you have that kind of, um, reach and you have the ability to, you know, weaponize, Twitter in a sense, you have trolls and bots attacking people, shutting people down, as well as just dumping a whole bunch of misinformation, it just overwhelms the system. And especially during a pandemic, when people are not out talking to each other and they're relying on, Twitter and Facebook and these social media spaces, those are our public spaces where we share information. And so that's something I also is, is going to be expanding, I think, in all types of races locally. And people are not aware of how much misinformation is out there and how much it's weaponized and how much, you know, how many bots and trolls and just targeted, um, inorganic campaigns. Are, you know, we're not, it's, it's not just Russia.
Oh, no, no, we, we are definitely used to this. Literally last, I started off the show saying, I'm, you know, I said, I'm very tired, I didn't sleep. You know why? Cause I woke up to 1,500 bots attacking me over, uh, you know, challenging somebody. I mean, this is, this is, it is warfare and it's, um, and I, I said, you know, Congress needs to do something about this. And of course, you know, they started calling me, it was like a McCarthyist attack. I'm like, no, that's not, actually not what I'm talking about. Congress has a job and it'd be great if our government operated, unless you like being in a completely, you know, unregulated free market space. If that's the case, maybe you're not on the left, but these are my, my opinions on this.
It's really important and I just want to add, like, it wasn't just me getting targeted. Parents that would comment or, or share were personally getting targeted and doxxed by some of these campaigns. And so it becomes really unsafe, not just for me, but for student leaders who are speaking out about things. And so that really shuts down democratic dialogue and it keeps people, um, there were a lot of parents who were scared about reopening. Would, one, I wrote, read, um, policies to help keep our schools safe. And I said, will you be comfortable with me sharing that you helped me with this? They all declined because they were getting targeted. And so it, it really isn't impacting our democracy.
That's right. It's there to silence people, it's there to silence dissent. And, and these are also spaces, I, I have to reiterate this over and over again. These are spaces, these algorithms are not just designed by white men, but they are feeding, they're promoting and pushing white male, um, perspectives. And, you know, when you don't have other perspectives in a room, it's the, it's the legacy of Gamergate. We saw what happened with Gamergate. It's now playing out in real life and in, in, whether it's YouTube politics, um, or, or on, um, you know, in real impactful campaigns, uh, involving, you know, school boards. I mean, this is very, very real. And I will never shut up about this and, you know, I, I am really happy that you're not either. I've had a ton of stuff thrown at me. I imagine you are, you know, and there's many times when I get frustrated and I feel unsafe. I had to move apartments, like, I'm just going to be real. And I'm sure you're in these situations too. And it's important for us to talk about it so that people who might be white males are aware of it and can use their privilege in this space to, to call it out. Because it's, um, you know, I, I often feel like if people don't feel it, they don't see it, they don't think it's real.
Yeah.
But, you know, you're, this is a volunteer position for you and, uh, you've really put yourself out there and you've taken the worst types of attacks from the worst types of people. I just, my only question I have left is before, before we tie this up and we'd love to have you back on, by the way. This is such a big conversation that I feel like we barely even touched it. Is there an effort to reform the recall effort? I mean, we've seen how it's been used as a weapon. And I imagine there's no elected official, uh, in California isn't worried about being recalled themselves right now.
Well, I, locally, I think immediately we have a board of supervisors. They started, um, discussing policies to make it more difficult to file recalls. I think it's really great that they realize, oh, I'm next. And then they decided to implement this, um, this new policy. But, you know, I think California is, is unique and it's, it may be different in different states. But I think the, the big picture is, is that, um, you know, as, as I said before, we have this national strategy of really disenfranchising voters. And folks, you know, are using whatever tactics they have available to them locally. And so we have redistricting, we have, you know, people's voter rights being restricted. Um, and they're also looking for ways that they can either force resignations, via information attacks, which is what happened to me. They tried to get me to resign and then, you know, but additionally, you see it in, in Boston. There were several school board members that were forced to resign based on, um, claims that they were anti Asian or, or anti white for integrating Boston Latin. You see this in Ludbrook, Virginia, around Thomas Jefferson High School, you know, all across the country with anti CRT, um, or, you know, there's a lot of these. And so, so there's a kind of a direct link between if they can't do it policy wise, they're, they're doing it through propaganda and these information attacks. So, you know, whatever works, you know?
It would be really amazing if, um, there were organizations out there, and I know, I know that they exist, that could do briefings for press on, on like the strategies. Because I do think a lot of people fall for this. I think some people just don't care and they have their own agendas and they're going to do what they need to do. Because they're on networks that are funded by a lot of the, the folks. But there are definitely some folks who fall for it. And I think, you know, media literacy around how, I mean, media literacy for the media, not for the, the viewers, on how, um, this misinformation is being weaponized. I mean, media literacy for the media, not for the, the viewers, on how um, this misinformation is being weaponized and these, these tactics are being used and who's behind them. Um, and not to fall for a CRT because they can come up with any, I, I don't even, I don't even give it power because the more you give it power, the more it becomes a thing. And it's, instead it's just like attacks on teachers' unions because they don't want the Democrats to be in power. I mean, that's really what this is about. They want power.
Organized labor. I, I
That's exactly, exactly.
You have organized labor in San Francisco, they team up, they work with other labor unions. They increase that power because they work in solidarity with one another. And so you have companies like Uber, you know, or other companies, they don't want labor to be powerful in any, any way. Cause they all, you know, labor unions like working together because they organize. So, yeah, definitely. There's a lot to talk about. Being able to talk, but also just all the other content that you provide is really, really wonderful.
You're very kind. Um, Commissioner Allison Collins, I'm so grateful for, for your work and your courage and putting yourself out there and, and speaking. And um, I hope more folks have you on to discuss what's happening and, you know, just, just grateful.
I wanted to make one plug. I am going to be um, launching a podcast where I can have these types of conversations with the folks that are educating me. So I talked with Dr. Grayson. He um, started the um, the Rachel Violence syllabus after Heather Hire murder. Um, but I'm also talking to folks from Zin Education Project who are pushing to fight back and educate, worth working with other educators to, to mobilize and educate folks. So I encourage people to um, check me out on my socia's and also um, I'll be launching that podcast shortly. And it's called Just Talks and I'm really excited um, to be able to do this type of thing with folks that are like on the, on the ground, um, pushing back on these attacks on education justice.
I love when activists um, and folks who are on the ground get involved in, in media because there's, there's a whole lot of people with hot takes and who read a lot of theory, which is important. Uh, not a lot of folks who've actually lived it and can smell things before, you know. Uh, you know, it's, it's true though. I mean, it's, it's a muscle and, and when you've been an organizer and you've been on the front lines, um, you can smell things before maybe the general public sees them coming. So it's really important to, to have your voice out there. So thank you, Allison, uh, for joining us. Good luck. And I hope you run again for something else very soon. It would be really amazing. Really want to see you in office because we need more teachers in office and you're fierce as F. So thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, everybody. That was our Fem Friday. Thank you again for joining us. Please, um, if you're not already, please make sure to support us on Patreon dot com slash the No Me Key Show. That is how we fund the show. Uh, make sure to like and subscribe. You gotta get those likes and subscribes up. Thank you to everybody who already is a patron. We love you. We so love you. Um, and we're looking forward to doing some special stuff with you very soon. Thank you again for joining us. I hope you have a wonderful weekend. And as always, uh, stay in solidarity. You know, this is like really, really important right now. Stay in solidarity.